Next week.
Next week.
Does it?
(laughing). Could I?
All right, I give up.
Does the extension go to the prevailing side? Well, there was no prevailing side in this. Okay.
Could I make a recommendation since it is, there's no clear direction going to next week? Would you like me to talk to those residents prior to next week and get some feedback? I'm sorry, two weeks? If you'd like me to, I'd be happy to do that.
Well, I would suggest that you recommend, talk to them and tell them that if there's a bad accident, they're going to be responsible, if possible, because of the cars interfering. And ask them to check with the church if they can use the church parking lot when it ain't being used for all the people that park there.
You're not quite telling us if they're responsible.
Well, I'm just saying. I give up. If I had an old car, an old beat-up truck, I'd sideswipe the both of them and keep right on going.
I don't believe you just said it.
I'm done. I'm done.
Do you want to make a motion on the lights?
I'll make a motion on the lights. Additional lighting, please.
Don't we have to follow the policy and get a petition and get to see if the people want it? Or is this something we're going to just force on them? I understand that you're saying we need it, but in general, our policy was that we got a petition and get people to come in.
We have to get a petition up for lights? I don't know. I never had a thing for lights. Where?
What if we put the ornamental lighting over there? We don't-
Let it go to town. Let it go to town.
It couldn't hurt.
Okay. Just a suggestion.
You can fire the chair. I'm giving up, but that's it. Okay. We're going to take a vote? All right. Mr. Wilson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The street lighting policy says that the city has to send out its own survey to the residents within a certain radius of where the light would be. So I believe if you want to investigate the option of putting up some streetlights, it would be to direct staff to issue the survey accordingly from where you want the lighting to be. Obviously, we would refer that to Mr. Kramer, so it would be under his purview, but that would be the appropriate action if you want to investigate lighting. That would be to direct staff to send out our survey.
I turn the lights over to public meeting. On the next meeting.
I turn the lights over to public meeting. Public works to see what kind of lights can be put over there by Mr. Kramer. All right. All right. Items that could be considered for future meetings. Amendment. Oh, this is a good one. Amendment. Ordinance about cannabis. What do they call it? Synthetic cannabis, which is chemical marijuana. That'll be next, that'll be in January. Anything else? I'll make a- I'll make a, I'll adjourn. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's all yours, right?
Thank you. I'd like to call the Order of Finance Committee.
I'm so mad.
Let the record show that everyone's still here. I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from December 8, 2011. That's my motion.
Second motion.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four, audit engagement. Turn it over to Mr. Wilson.
Thank you, Chairman Wesley. I'll be as brief as I can. Three years ago, the city won out for RFP, for auditing services. That initial RFP contained language for a three-year bid with a mutually agreed-upon three-year renewal. The initial three-year engagement is up, and on page three, there were preliminary numbers for the renewal. In good news, those numbers are actually a little bit high, not a lot, but a little bit high from what I've been officially given from Wolf and Company. And for a number of reasons listed through the, with Exhibit 13-page memo I gave you all, staff is recommending to extend Wolf for three more years. And after that, or in the meantime, also work on a mandatory auditor rotation policy so that we don't have to go through this every couple of years. It's just, we do a five-year bullet and then we switch. Couple of the communities have similar programs in place right now, and it's worked out pretty well for them. Just tend to get us to that point. As I said, staff would be looking for a motion to enter into a three-year letter of engagement with Wolf and Company for fiscal years 12, 13, and 14 to perform audit services.
So you're looking for a motion to court for a three-year agreement with Wolf, correct?
Correct.
I'll make that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Any questions? Holdman Wesley?
Can I ask one question? Are we going to make a motion to agree with the proposal that he put together after these three years? It goes out and they can't bid for it again? I mean, you wrote this whole, is this what, you're looking for the whole vote on this open packet? Or are we only going to vote on an extension of three years?
At this time, I would prefer the motion to be for the three years. But then if you like the idea of formalizing the policy of just going out for a five-year bid and then not allowing the incumbent to re-bid at the end of that term, just give me direction to prepare that, and I could have that probably in January or February.
I'll go with this motion, I mean.
That's fine. Would you like to talk about that in a future meeting?
Yeah, I'll bring it up and down the line. That's fine.
So you don't want to have the agenda for future right now?
Well, you're having it down to that discussion.
Okay. Any other questions? Since it's money, let's do a roll call. Not money.
Holdman Roy Wesley?
Yes.
Holdman Coles?
Yes.
Holdman Sizmarski?
Yes.
Holdman Eugene Wesley?
No.
Holdman Winger?
Yes.
Holdman Lozara?
Yes.
Holdman Moitz?
Yes.
Mix. Yes? I have one question. This wasn't money that we were awarding today. We were looking to extend their contract add three more years. We don't know what the dollar amount's going to be.
It's actually on page three of the memo. The second and third years are slightly higher than what the actual number is. 2013 is $30,006.25.
I'll change my vote to yes. My mistake.
Any other questions? Okay, Brad. Let's go to six-month financial review.
Certainly. For the past few years, staff has come to the committee with just, tried to do a high-level review of where the city's at after the first six months of the year. Six months is through October. Admittedly, it takes us a couple of weeks to get through October and close out the books, and then with the Thanksgiving holiday, it typically rolls into December before we get to actually the presentation of the first six months. So a couple of the slides, we do actually have seven or eight months' worth of numbers in there because they are available to us. But on balance, we do go through just six months. The first slide is, as you can see, six months is the blue column. The budget is red, and then the final number is the green column. Admittedly, in 2012, we don't have a final because we're still in the middle of the fiscal year. And that's just raw dollar amounts, where we were and where we finished. So just on a revenue-collected basis, you can see 2009 was the last time that we came in above budget on revenues. But two of those three, two of the three years, '09, '10, '11, we still put money into the fund balance because expenditures came in lower than expected as well. The numbers are nice, but a percentage basis is more telling. As per the last slide, remember, '10 and '11 came in under budget, and you can see on a percentage basis, they did come in under the 100% budget. '09 was the last year that the revenues came in over 100%, and it was roughly 63% through the first six months. You can see, we're pretty close to being on the same path in 2012. One of the biggest reasons for the revenue, the revenue collection decline is that the property taxes are collected within the first six months of the year. So there's that $2.7 million block of money that's collected in the first half of the year and not the second half of the year. So staff is cautiously optimistic that 2012 numbers on a percentage basis are mirroring '09, which was a very good year. Mr. Chairman? Question?
Mr. Mayor?
You brought up the taxes in the first six months, but just so everybody's aware, that the difference in the taxes is only $8,000. And basically, we're up $800,000 from last year, so at the same point, so-
Correct.
It was only an extra $8,000.
Correct, yeah. The property, yeah, the property tax levy was not a significant jump from '11 to '12. So we'll go to the next slide. The first bullet there, among others, those are the bigger ticket items, property taxes, telecom tax, personal property replacement tax, vehicle licenses, and the police department court fines are all on target. They're all trending very nicely this year. The use fees, cable franchise fees, building permits, and sales tax are all ahead of projections. I think we're relatively close to the same building permit number we had through eight months now this year that we collected all of last year. So building permits are coming in very well, sales tax very well. Cable franchise fees, looking back, was probably budgeted low. We weren't sure what to expect from AT&amp;T once we started collecting that money, so this year we'll have a better handle on that, and that number will be revised up pretty handily in this next coming budget. And rental housing inspections and business licenses are two of the bigger lines that aren't collected until after the six-month mark. Business licenses are due by December 31st. They go out the end of October, so those are starting to roll in now and appear to be trending, trending as they should through this time of the month. Sales tax, as I mentioned, was trending very well this year. So what we have here, we went back to 2008 and looked at the collections for six months, seven months, and eight months on sales tax. And as you can see, 2012 is on par, or even a little bit ahead in some cases of 2009, which is kind of the high watermark for the city over the last number of years. Couple of things with '10 and '11, late in '09, first quarter '10 is kind of when the bottom fell out of the economy, so it's not overly surprising to see, to see a trough there. Going up in '12, obviously, as you know, we have Thorntons that came in, that's helping prop those numbers up quite a bit. But even if you were to strip out Thorntons, it's still at or above the 2009 numbers. I know the next question that somebody's going to have is why or how. And being a non-home rule community, we can't see all of the businesses' sales tax returns through their IBT number with the state. It's not allowed through the state statute for us to do that. So staff has sent a letter to the Illinois Department of Revenue to request them to look into perhaps why is it the gas stations being honest? There was an article in the Tribune about nine months ago where the gas stations over the last number of years were possibly skimming. It could be that. It could be that there's, you know, some businesses in the industrial park that have sales tax, a sales tax component that we just don't know about. Over the last year, they filled about a million square feet of space in the industrial park. We have a line on the business application that says, "Do you sell retail?" Well, if it's B-to-B sales or other sales, they're not necessarily retail sales, but they could still be generating sales tax. And unless they come and ask for an incentive, we wouldn't know that. So there is a high probability that there's one or more companies that have moved into the industrial park that are creating sales tax, not on a retail basis, but maybe on a wholesale or a B-to-B basis that we're just not aware of, that we're hoping IDOR can help shed some, shed some light on for us.
Brad? You were talking about, you contacted the state about the sales tax. Do you also check on the hotels, too? Did you ask them to check on that, too? About their sales tax that they charge, that we're supposed to get from them, too?
Every month, we get a report from the hotels on what their gross rents are, and then they calculate their rebate to us every month. So we get a form from each of the hotels every month showing what their, what their rents were every month. So we get those as a function of collecting the hotel motel tax. They have to prove out their calculation to us.
Okay.
Brad, back up-
Holdman Wesley?
Back up here for one minute, just for one, one question here. You saying that there's some industrial buildings out there that may be adding sales tax to us because they may be selling stuff out there? Because I know we got some, I know we got one floor company in the industrial park. Is there a way that you could provide a list on who those may be that puts down their business license for we know? Because if they were on their business license, which we ask them right out, is there a way that we could go through those business licenses and actually see how many businesses actually, that we know of in our town that is adding to it? I think it's great, but I'd like to know that, how many businesses are actually adding to that system?
Sure, yeah. And we've discussed it internally. I believe the business license asks if they sell retail. It doesn't specifically ask if they generate sales tax. And so we could see if they, if they said they sell retail or not. So, but like I said, we have asked the Illinois Department of Revenue to try and give us a little guidance on this because we, you know, myself, Community Development Department, we have some thoughts on the topic, but until we get the letter from IDOR, we can't really... But yeah, we're, we're going to try. We're going to wait to see what Illinois Department of Revenue says first and try and give us a little guidance on that. But we certainly agree that we're going to try and find a way to capture that data going forward. Similar chart to revenues, just for expenses. Again, just on a dollar amount basis, you can see that really, you know, the last few years, been trending very, very well. 2010, really, the only reason it was over in 2010 was that year we paid off our early retirement, which was around $700,000. We paid out that we hadn't budgeted originally for, so that did provide a little bit of a hit, but we saved 3.86% annually on the IMRF rate, so still, still worth it, good return on investment on that. On a percentage basis, again, you can see we're, you know, within tenths of a percent of where we were last year at the same time that we came in right on budget last year, and only a percentage point ahead of 2009 where we came in significantly under. So, you know, have a really good confidence on that. There are two items that get paid in the second half of the year. The IMR, the, excuse me, the IRMA premium and the additional contribution to the police pension fund. So the fact that that's a few percentage points below 50 is a positive thing. If it was above 50, I would be concerned, but being below 50, I have a good feeling about that. Just a couple of highlights, you know, we've only spent $3,600 more this year than we did to the same time last year. You know, very consistent in our spending. One of the things that's helping us this year is the vacancies in the police department from the retirees. That IRMA premium I talked about, we had budgeted, I believe, $470, $484, and it came in around $420. So we're going to see some savings versus budget on that. And then everything else, you know, is trending within reason, not too many emergencies so far this year, you know, and doing okay. Knock on Fermica, that counts. So just overall, the revenues appear to be trending very positively. Sales tax is well above, and that's before the holiday months even get thrown in there, so we feel very well about that. Nothing on the expenditure side so far, and as we said, so far, it's a good year as of now. The hotel motel tax, Alderman Wesley spoke about, right now, they're trending a little bit above projections, which means they're having higher occupancy rates, which is good for them and good for us. Motor fuel tax above projections, that's largely in part due to the higher gas costs over the last few months. The IML numbers that they came out with a year ago, year and a half ago, a little bit low, they weren't expecting the spike in gas prices. Non-home rule sales tax trending higher along with the sales tax. And commuter parking, the hang cards and the daily parking are trending at or above where we thought, even in light of the quarter increase, are still trending right along with where we want.
Brad, when you, you mentioned about the quarter increase. If you didn't raise that quarter, you're still saying that the part, what I'm saying is we gain more customers in there. For parking?
The, the hang cards, the quarterly hang cards, were selling out before the increase, and they're selling out now after the increase. And the daily parking, I'd say maybe dipped perhaps the first month or two after that, but it appears that since the revenues bumped, jumped back up, that those riders have come back, so I wouldn't say it hasn't, it hasn't been detrimental to a lot.
Okay.
I don't have concise ridership numbers or parking numbers, but just looking at the revenue on a year-to-year basis, it hasn't been detrimental on a, on a revenue basis. Sanitation fund, people are still paying for garbage, we're still paying for garbage. And the grants, not a lot of grant activity right now, but the police department's doing a great job of continuing getting all their grants from the state. I think this year, I think we've had 15 or 16 different claims from the state for different seatbelt enforcement, railroad crossing enforcement, no texting enforcement, all sorts of different things. So commend the police department for a great job on grants. Onto our favorite water and sewer fund. The capital spending, as you know, through the CIP, has increased each of the last three years. The sales are on par with previous years. On the last four years, four and a half years, consumption in the town has been trending downward. However, mostly, I would say, you know, due to the vacancy rate, the foreclosures, and the vacant homes in town. I know the DuPage Water Commission, I believe Mayor Police was at that meeting, has said in their revenue forecast, they're assuming they're pumping to actually continue to go down, I think it's 2% to 3% every year over the life of this, the Chicago rate increase. So that's why they've had to add a little extra to cover for the lower, lower sales. And just as a note for the final expenses on the next couple of charts, the capital spending is excluded from that. When we do the audit, there's some consolidation entries that take those out of the expenses. So when you see the final numbers being significantly below budget, it doesn't necessarily mean that it was, it's just that the capital was stripped out of those numbers. Again, just the raw numbers, I'll just go onto the percentages, I like those better. I think they're more, more informative, I think. As you can see, we're trending a little bit above last year when we wound up above 100%. So we're feeling optimistic, looking at just the trends from, from year to year on that. Nothing too exciting, I'd say. The water sales are down slightly, but, you know, it's kind of expected, looking at the trends from the last few years. Expenses, that huge number jump in '12 was all based on the capital spending, not the actual day-to-day operations. And the higher percentage in '12 so far is again based upon funding of the capital, the treatment plant, Addison Road Water Maines, the change order for hemlock ash and edge wood that we did. So that got rolled into there. But on a percentage basis, on par with 2010, which wound up being a pretty good year as well, so not too concerned there. And this is something that a lot of times gets overlooked, is the water accountability, the pumped versus billed. So how much of the water that we're billed for, do we actually bill out to the residents or the businesses? So third in a row, we've been at or above 91% with the treatment plant and some of the other setups in town that we have. 91% to 92% is about the highest we're going to get, probably. Other communities that I've talked to, both formally and informally, one being the second largest city in the state, is down around 75%. So for every four gallons of water that they're losing, they can only bill out three because one gallon is just gone. And there's a very nice community south of '80 that one out of every three gallons that they buy is gone. They have no clue where it goes, it's just into the ethers. So for us to be up over 90% is great, very commendable. I believe five or six years ago, it was down in the 80s. So staff and council should both be commended for, for committing to tightening the system up and, you know, making sure that we're as close to optimal as we can be, so. I believe, yeah, overall, nothing out of the norm, no anomalies, nothing, you know, kind of throwing a red flag up. Sales tax and building permit numbers are very encouraging, and as I said before, it looks like it's shaping up to be a good year so far. We still have the winter to go, so not going to get too excited until we get to March or April, but so far, so good.
No snow.
Agreed.
Brad, with the state, are we still at three and four months behind on getting our income taxes?
Just put a memo in the packet that was going out today, or tomorrow? It's five now.
So we're going up?
Yes. Somewhat ironic, they actually paid better when they were only collecting 3% from us all than when they're collecting 5% from us now. I don't know. Admittedly, they're lighter months because they're kind of the, they're not the heavier months, but it's still five months, yes. Last payment we got from them was on November 2nd.
Okay, we're not looking good for the state. Any other questions? No, you don't. Thank you. I had asked you to. He has two things he wants to know. Okay. Revenue handbook. Go ahead, Brad.
Mr. Chairman, the revenue handbook was something that admittedly, I borrowed the idea from a future stop of mine, but it seemed that it was very helpful for even sometimes staff to know kind of how the money was generated, where it comes from, and what the derivation of, of the calculation is. So what we tried to do with this was go through each of the revenues in every fund and try to give a baseline as to what a tax is. and try to give a baseline as to what a tax is, you know, what a license is, grants, fees, just to try and give a little more clarity as to what those are. And then in the description field, try and give some, some clarity as to how that, that tax is derived. You know, because I get the question all the time, you know, well, what's telecom? Well, you know, telecom is your phone. Okay. Well, where's my cable bill go? Because I have my phones on the cable bill. Well, the cable portion goes to the cable franchise fee. The phone portion goes to the telecom tax. And, you know, your TV, that's the cable. And the internet would go to something else. So, it, you know, in an effort to try and delineate where the different silos are and how they're derived, that was kind of the motivation and the thought process behind putting this together. We would like to add a couple more columns to this, but just wanted to get this out to you now before the CIP, before the budget, to try and get the information out there a little bit ahead of time and then, you know, either right after the budget or, you know, in the summer, add a couple of their columns to this and flesh it out a little bit more. But as I said, at worst case, I wanted to get you the bare bones of it and some rudimentary information to help guide the CIP and budget conversations. I don't really have a whole lot to say unless there's any specific questions. Just wanted to, like I said, get it out to you guys and, and show you. It will be another incarnation of it in a few months, but like I said, just baseline.
Allman Winger.
I just want to thank you for taking the initiative to put something like that together. It's pretty impressive. I know, it's helpful to myself and probably especially to someone coming in fresh that's a new Alderman or a new person to the city. So, thank you. And I can see how, when you add more to it, it'll really be helpful. Thanks.
When you add more to it, there'll be more questions, I'm sure. I have one question for, I don't know if it's for you or for the police chief, on a speeding ticket or anything that goes through the courts. What's the percentage that comes back to Wooddale?
About 42.
That's after the courts and clerks and... Okay. Any other questions? Oh, do you want me to say that? Okay. Thank you, Brad. That was very helpful. Very good job. Now, we'll go to Allman Eugene Wesley because he has future meeting items. Go ahead.
I don't know if I ever seen it yet. I have asked several months and several years for the list of grants that are out there and where they are and all that. And obviously, in this report, I see the police grants there, but I'm sure there's more grant money out there that we don't know about. So, can we have edited eventually to this console on where that grant money is and what, how much it is and that? Because I know I just asked here and we have asked for that for several years, year after year for the budget. And I keep hearing that we're still working, we're still working on it. I'd like to know where all that grant money is, that it ain't seen in the general fund.
Okay. Go ahead, Brad.
A historical report of that was provided to you when we passed out the audit about a month and a half ago. And it listed out also the grants for the grade separation and stuff like that. We can certainly recirculate that for you.
Can you make another copy and give it to Allman Wesley and go through with them?
We can recirculate, sure. And we're going to put in the budget as well this year as an exhibit in the back of the historical. And it also included the, the grant from Senator Rabeletti, the, the capital bill, Representative Rabeletti from Senator Pankow, the one we got for the Salt Creek lighting, stuff like that, so.
Now, you just opened the door here.
I'm looking for future grants. Obviously, you did this really nice handbook and I commend you with that. That should have been in there though. Not this, you just listed the police grants. That should have been in here too then, in this report. I'll talk to him.
Okay. Could you get a copy of the future grant? What he's asking. You understand what he's asking for, sir?
Yes.
And then, and then the other item that I'd like to see is if we...
Okay, go ahead.
The other item I'd like to see is if we could get a, on the sales revenue, if, if you could look at those business licenses. I mean, it doesn't have to be next meeting, but down the line, if we could see where, why that increased so much and how many, who is actually sales, sales are in here. And I know we could pull it up, so that's it.
Allman Woods, are you just saying hi or you want to be recognized?
Recognized.
Okay, go ahead.
Brad, I just, one, it was a nice job. It's kind of helpful to have that little handbook, so I'll give you a little pat on the back. And after that then, my question is, we talked about that project management software so we can get a better handle on the CIP and all those programs, just kind of a little, as I give you attaboy to go, you know, make sure that we implement that too. Thanks.
Well, you want to recognize? Okay, go ahead, Brad.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I've spoken to Springbrook. I've gotten some documentation on setups and required fields and stuff like that. And as we move into the CIP and pass that, we are going to be looking to implement that for the new construction season.
Now, I got more, two hands up. Mr. Mayor.
Brad, on the Springbrook, didn't I read something that you were talking about using the Excel program right now, but there's something better than the Springbrook that you can, you can use? I thought it was in it, on their information only. Wasn't I, or I read that incorrectly?
Go ahead.
Correct. It was an information item. The cost to buy the fixed asset module in Springbrook is around 13,000 and it's worse than the Excel that we're using now. And that came up as a function of the audit, the comment in the, the management letter that Alderman Wesley was inquiring about. I've spoken to Wolf about the comment and the fact that over 75% of their clients use Excel exclusively. They're going to take a look at that system-wide and effectively acknowledge for the smaller clients that only have one or two transactions a month, it's just not economically feasible to spend that type of money for that. So, that is going to get cleared up this audit season.
You want to continue?
I just want to make sure we wish everybody a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
You took my line.
Sorry.
That's okay. Allman Wesley, you had your hand up. Did I get it answered?
Oh, I got my answer. Thank you.
Okay, I got one, one thing to ask the city manager. I know we're coming to the point of budget here and I know that we talked about the city website and I don't see it and anything about the future meeting to talk about. Are we not going to talk about that for future meetings or you're just going to say, "Here"? So, when's it coming?
I may have to call IT manager Case and answer that one.
IT manager is Nick?
Correct.
Mr. Nick, would you like to come out of closet there?
He's a multitasker.
That's right. So, the camera's going to stay on me on this.
Question about the website. Can you repeat?
The question is, when's it going to come to us?
Okay. For council approval?
Because it was supposed to be done before budget.
Correct. It will be, well, part of the problem is the IT budget, there's a lot of things we have to look at. Each department is going to want their own section of the site. And if we're going to do the site, we should probably do it as a whole, not just one department at a time, which that could cost anywhere from $4,000 to $100,000. What we need to do is we need to look at every department, see what functions they want on the site and then carry on from there. Then we can accurately budget for it and...
Whoa, 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 whoa. This was already budget of $12,000 and now you're going, now you're going to come to me and sit there and say that we're only to this point to say what each department wants in their, in the plan here? Is this, is this what we were talking about? We've been on this, boy, maybe eight, nine months, Mr. Manager?
Myself and Finance Director Wilson just had this conversation probably earlier this week. I think you're referring to the money put in the budget for the economic development video, which referenced some improvements to the community development section of the website?
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Okay. The whole website overall was never budgeted to be fixed yet. I think we're planning on putting that in the budget for next year. So, I'm not sure if, I think Mr. Case is saying that it may be prudent to fix the whole website before just, you know, fixing one section of the website. I don't, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
That's what he's saying. The video is being worked on though right now.
When's that coming?
It was supposed to come out by the end of the year. There was some delays in production. The mayor actually just shot some footage last week, I believe. So, it is ongoing. I think it's pretty much, you know, final editing. I think they did all their shots. Mayor, you may have a better update than...
I don't know.
Okay. It is being produced and like Mayor said, we did shoot some last week.
Well, I hope to see it by the time the budget comes.
Well, the video will definitely be completed by the end of the budget here.
Okay, everyone wants to go? Motion for a German.
Second.
I'm favored.
Aye.
Allman Wesley, you oppose or no? Oh, okay. Motion carries.